Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. It is 4:30. I'd like to call this meeting order. Before we get into our agenda, I'd like to stand for a moment of silence and then follow that with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if we could have a roll call, please.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Tom Brewster.
Here.
Ryan Henn.
Here.
Wayne Barahona.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
All right. And moving on to item two, approve the agenda. The latest version of the agenda should have item six D, the retirement notice from Brian Wilinga from the police force.
Will we approve the agenda? Support.
I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Under item seven, Chief Birch and I would also like to have a brief discussion about shop with a cop under item seven.
Okay, we'll just make that part of your report then. Okay, very good. So with those items, we have a motion and approval. Can roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Henn.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right, then at this time, we have public forum for items on or off the agenda. At this time, we welcome your comments and opinions and ask that you participate, your participation reflects the common desires we all share to make Sheldon an even greater place for all citizens. I thank you for joining us. At this time, I ask that you turn off your, or silence your cell phones. If you think you have it off, please check it, double-check it. You will have the opportunity to address the city council under the public forum, which we are just going into shortly here, which will occur in a few moments. When addressing the council, please wait to be recognized by myself and then step to the podium to state your name and address for the record. Please speak to the council as a body, not to any single member. Questions will be taken under advisement, and there will not be a back-and-forth discussion at this time. You're asked to limit your remarks to no more than four minutes, and after making your comments, please be seated. I ask that everyone observe, and I know that you will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So are there any public comments that anyone would like to make at this time?
I'm going to ask Tricia if there's anybody on.
Do we have any joining us by Zoom meeting, Tricia?
Negative, we do not.
Okay. And there's no one moving here, so since there are no comments, we'll move on then to our consent agenda.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Henn.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Currys. All right, moving on to old business. Item five A, a resolution amending the residency policy for city employees, continuing our discussion from back on June the third. Sam, you look like you're ready to enlighten us.
Yes, if I could just give a brief update. So it's important, it's important to note that the current residency rule only applies to Public Works and the Police Department. And the rule for city managers and the city manager's contract, current city manager lives in town and has every intention to stay in town as long as he's in this position. We have looked at, and it's also important to note that there is not a residency requirement for our other employees. And what we're looking at is, we're requesting that you consider opening up to three and a half miles of City Hall, not city limits, but City Hall, because otherwise it's too nebulous to figure out. So three and a half miles for Public Works and for the Chief of Police, and 25 miles for Police. So I worked up some amendments to the personnel policy, which will be adopted by resolution. MICA has reviewed, and we've made some minor amendments to the amendment. And then when we continue on with our review of the Personnel Manual later this year and next, then those changes will be incorporated into that as well and reviewed again. So I don't know if Chief Birch has anything to add, but otherwise I'll stand for your questions.
One question that I have, Sam. It does mention all public safety. Is that employed, or does that include volunteer public safety as well?
Would not include, no, it would include full-time only. So it would, it would include Police Department and then Kristin, Kristin Han or SCAT Coordinator.
So with that said, if we got a reserve officer, would they fall under that category if they weren't full-time?
It would not.
And we currently have that situation now, correct?
No, our, our, well, we, you know, she was, Krista Bowesma has stepped down because she's moved to, moving to Haywarden, and we were, we were willing to let her continue coming to do reserve position if she wanted to, but it's a long, a long drive.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion?
If I also might, we added clear language in the policy that makes it clear that regardless of where you live, there's the expectation that you'd be to work on time. If there's a snowstorm that you think is coming, then it's up to you to come get a motel room or make other arrangements, but those kind of arrangements would not be at city expense.
Okay, so we have the policy in front of us here, too, as part of the agenda here. Hope you're ready to pass that. Yeah, make a motion that we approve the resolution as amended.
Okay. Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Currys. All right, let's move on then to our item B under keynote five, the zoning ordinance amendment. First of all, the resolution approving the amendments to the zoning ordinance. Bring that up here a minute. And anything you'd like to comment on at this time, Sam?
No, it's ready to go.
Okay. Any discussion from the council? We've discussed this.
Do we need a motion to approve this resolution? Or no?
I think, don't we need a motion to close the public hearing?
No, a public hearing was held last month already.
But I thought we kept postponing it and delaying it, extending it?
It's been closed because we did, we did first and second reading.
Okay.
Closed it before doing first reading.
Okay.
So.
So then, yes, we would entertain a resolution, or a motion to approve the resolution as presented in your agendas.
So move.
Second.
Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Henn.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Okay. Right along, under new business now, under.
I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We needed a motion to approve third reading, no.
Oh, great.
I make the motion to approve the third reading.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster. Aye.
All right, so that one we can put to bed. Yes?
Yes.
Good. Moving on to item six A now, then, the rezoning of the existing Mobile Home Park from AC and C1 to Mobile Home District MH. Public hearing on that now.
I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So I, we did receive one written public comment, and I'd like to read it for the record.
Okay.
This is from Jeff and Cindy Cody, who own the properties at 1330 and 1332 Third Avenue. Says, this was sent on Friday, the 26th. Good morning, Sam. Jeff and I have no concerns of the Sunset Motel property rezoned and turned into mobile home use by Kerwin and Kathy Sterling. We have a gentleman's agreement with Kerwin that the fence will remain between the two properties to curtail foot traffic. I'd also like to say in the, in the hearing that although we haven't had multiple readings on this, it has been on the agenda multiple times, and I would like to recommend that, that once we close the public hearing, that we proceed with approving the resolution and then another motion to approve first reading and waive second and third. Since we are in a public, public hearing, I'd like to see if, and the property owner is here, if he has anything he'd like to add for the record.
So Kerwin, do you have anything?
Not for that, no way.
Okay. All right, so we have to close the hearing first? Yes.
Hold on, Kerwin. That letter, is that about the fence?
Yes.
Okay, that's.
With Mr. Cody.
Yep, that's accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he's, he called me up and. Yeah, he called me up and we talked about it, and I, I, for my point of view, I would like to see the fence there, and obviously he wanted the fence there, so I think he called a gentleman's agreement, but yeah.
Good.
Yeah, it's definitely going to stay there, so.
Okay.
That way, he don't have to, he won't be picking anything I'm doing or vice versa. It's, it'll be a good thing.
Okay. Thank you. Fences make good neighbors here, is that what you're saying? Fences make good neighbors?
Yeah, well, it's a small town, we've got to get along, so, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Wayne.
Now your motion.
All right.
Closing.
Yeah, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
All right, then let's move on.
We need a motion to.
Approve the resolution. Approve the resolution next, and then, the way it is on here, waive the third, first, the second and third reading, is correct?
Yeah, we need a motion to approve the resolution.
I would do that.
Okay.
Support.
Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
And then finally, discussion, or discussion, yeah, or motion to waive the second and third readings.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading and waive the second and third readings.
We have support for that.
Support.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
You're welcome to come in, sir. We'll get, can we grab him a chair?
There's a chair right there.
Oh, sure, with.
With the book on.
Okay.
Just set it on the floor or something.
Okay, I think that's everything on that item A there. Let's move on then to item B, discussion regarding the $2.5 million general obligation capital loan note. Do you want to comment before or after the public hearing, Sam?
I can comment now.
Okay.
So Angie, we haven't received any oral written objections or letters on this?
No.
No.
Don't you want to do that during the hearing? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you open the hearing? Did I miss it?
No.
Sorry.
No, I misunderstood you.
You wanted to speak before.
Go ahead and open the hearing.
Okay, then let's open the hearing, and we'll move into that.
Okay, sir.
Okay. Are there any public comments regarding this, this item on our agenda, the $2.5 million general obligation note? Is anyone joined in the meantime, Tricia?
No one has joined.
Okay. There are apparently no public as well, so take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
If we can keep the hearing open while I make a few comments.
Okay. Will do.
So I'd like to state in the context of the hearing that these proceedings are prepared to show as the first step of the receipt of any oral or written objections from any resident or property owner to the proposed action of the council to enter into a loan agreement and issue the notes. A summary of objections received or made, if any, would then need to be attached to the proceedings. After all objections or concerns have been received and comments considered, the council decides not to abandon the proposal to issue the notes, the resolution should be introduced and adopted as it's listed on the agenda. The council is required by statute to adopt the resolution instituting proceedings to enter into a loan agreement and issue the notes hearing or at the hearing. In the event the council decides to abandon the proposal, then the resolution is, is tabled. Section 384.25 of the Code of Iowa provides that any resident or property owner of the city may appeal the decision to take additional actions to issue the notes to the district court, of which the city is located in whole or in part within 15 days. We have not, of this hearing, so we have not received any objections or letters or petitions. So, so we can proceed.
All right. So, yeah, there are no objections, so we have a motion from Barahona.
Make the motion to clo, or support Wayne's to close it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right, so now moving on then to the resolution. Item B two, approve the resolution then to institute proceedings to take addition. And there is a resolution in the packs for that as well.
So we need a motion to approve the resolution, is that what you're looking for?
To adopt it, yeah.
Yes.
Adopt it, whatever. So move.
Support. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye. Kent. Aye.
All right, then moving on to item six C, the appeal regarding the cleanup notice for 1320 South Third Avenue, the property owned by Kevin Crafton. Are you Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, welcome. I'd like to open the public hearing at this time, and if you have comments you'd like to make, I'd ask that you step forward to the mic, state your name for the record, and then let us, and let us hear your comments.
Hi, I'm Kevin Crafton. I guess my comments are, is, they say the trailer was completely destroyed where it's unrepairable, or it's completely damaged there. And, I mean, from the outside, it looks bad, and the inside has smoke damage, but the way I see it, I can take the side of the trailer, the awning where the fire actually was, and take that whole, like the garage part out, and then the other side of the trailer is pretty much good, tint wise and everything, and I can repair it to at least keep it as storage and, you know, slowly gut, gut it out as the time goes by, if it was allowed by the city for what it looks like, because I know you guys don't want just a burnt-down trailer sitting there on the block or whatever. So I guess I was hoping to be able to maybe work with you guys to have it look in some way acceptable to the community so that I could keep it there without having to take the whole thing out of there, or at least a little bit more time to figure out a way to get it out of there and get something put there more than a month, I guess.
Okay. At this time, I stated this earlier, as far as public forums concerned, we will listen to your comments and take them under advisement, and I'm guessing there's probably another comment, I'm seeing a hand there. So we'll continue with the public hearing, but we won't have a back-and-forth discussion at this time.
Great.
We'll just take it under advisement at this point.
Thank you.
And then we'll, we will be in touch with you.
Thank you.
So Kerwin, do you have comment also on this?
Yes.
Okay.
I can empathize with what Kevin's trying to do there, but we do need to move forward and keep this, we're trying to keep, bring this into town, back up to where it needs to be, and obviously, the way it is, I don't know that much has been done there, so I'd like to see him move forward on trying to get something or push forward with getting it cleaned up, one way or the other, so. As far as property owners and that end.
Okay, thank you. I might, Mr. Mayor? Yes.
I'd like to ask some, some questions in the context of the public hearing.
Okay.
To Mr. Crafton. And then after that, remind me if I forget, after that, I also have a public comment that I, that needs to be read into the, into the record.
Okay.
So Kevin, I have, and you and I have spoken on the phone this morning, and I have, do we have, do we have the other microphone? Do you know where the other microphone is?
Right next to Greg there.
Kevin, why don't you step, why don't you step up here, and I'll ask a question. So my first question, Kevin, is you do understand that you have been asked to remove the trailer and all of the debris from the property?
Yes.
And can you advise what you have done apply with the notice to this point?
I advise that I've found a way to sustainably live by having nowhere to go and no water, no electricity during COVID, after losing everything, by getting a top around my truck, by cleaning out my shed that was in the back of my yard, by making a brick stove, by slowly getting the wood that's burned and burning that, by going through it, using the help that given to me, to be able to take showers, to go to the laundromat, wash up, or go to the park now that that's open, use the camp shower. And I'm still working on it.
I have a couple of follow-up questions, I might. So can you clarify what you're asking the city council for? Are you asking for no cleanup, partial cleanup, or more time?
Well, I guess I'm asking for more clean, or more, more time, and also consideration of me not removing that trailer from there. I mean, as well as a musician, I am an artist, and what may not look all that pretty to you, or burnt up and whatever, looks like art to me, and I think it's inspirational to take some of those pieces from the fire. I mean, not all of it, some of it's ash and it's junk, but it is savable, and it is memorabilia, or things that I've collected that are still halfway decent to look at and might be interesting for, you know, the neighborhood or whatever, once it's safe and okay to actually come through and look at. And I'm not, yeah, I'd like to make it something magical.
I have another couple of questions, Mr. Mayor. So what, you already alluded to it earlier, but what does it have for working utilities?
Right now, there is no utilities. I'm still pulling the cords, and I need to contact them to get a box hooked up there.
So you have no electricity?
No.
No gas?
No.
No water or sewer?
No.
Toilet is not working?
No.
If you want to fix it, what would you say needs to be fixed in order for it to be livable again?
I guess I haven't even, I've been trying to focus on just making it so that I can get by day-to-day and then trying to enjoy life at the same time, and then also trying, now I'm just thinking about trying to make it so it doesn't look like crap when you drive by.
What is your cost estimate for the fixes, yeah, what it would cost you to make the fixes?
You know, I'd like it to be as cheap as possible. I've, I mean, there's things like earth ships, homes that they build out of used tires, mud, I mean, almost, and use solar energy and things like that. I have solar lights that I use it for night, and you could save rainwater here in Iowa. I mean, so I, it's one of those things, I haven't quite got it figured out, but I'm trying to make it work and, yeah.
I have one more. What would the time, what would the time estimate be for the fixes? How much more time would you need beyond the August date that's in the notice?
I guess it's hard saying if I could get, I mean, as much time as possible, but I mean, I want to make sure like it's looking to somewhat good to when you're going by, it doesn't just look like a burned-down place, because I realize it does, I, I stand across the street and I go, wow, it does look just about as bad as it looks, you know, it looks better from over across the street than it does inside over there, but I get that, but I don't know. It goes along with the artist thing, too, because I mean, if you come up and drive by, it might look like that, but if you come up and come look at the, what looks like garbage, it's art.
No further questions, Mayor. I do have a public comment I'd like to read from a citizen.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
This is from Cindy Cody, Tuesday, June 30. Mr. Quaker, as homeowner south of the Crafton burned-up mobile home, I don't see how Kevin plans to rebuild the mess. First and foremost, he didn't have insurance and is unemployed. We consider this lot an eyesore, as the yard is not mowed, and there are household items, scattered everywhere out back. I do witness him burning things from the mobile home, in which I have been told it has to be wood, and you have to be getting it ready to cook over. Not, just not the case here. Wood from mobile homes contains toxins, as most contain other chemicals. I'm asking for no leniency here and to get the mess cleaned up. The house across the street was marked uninhabited after the fire there, and I have never seen anything put on the mobile home unless it has been removed. I feel there is a health and safety issue there. I am concerned about rodents becoming a problem there. Thank you for keeping up on this situation. Sincerely, Cindy Cody.
Okay. So as is our practice, we will take these questions and comments under advisement at this time, and we will need to, we're not going to have a back-and-forth discussion now at this point, but we do need to move quickly on this one way or another. So at this point, we will, like I say, take it under advisement, and when we come up with a decision, we will let you know.
Okay. We may go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay, take a motion for that.
So moved.
Support. Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
All right, so we do have a spot on the agenda here now for discussion and direction regarding the appeal. Are there any comments that anyone would like to make at this time? I guess I have just one question, Kevin, for you. Do you have help or support network for any of this, or is this all on your own?
This is all on my own.
Okay.
I, I mean, I've had friends and people offer, but I, safety wise and just personal wise, it feels good to be alone, so.
Okay. Any other comments for discussion at this time from the council? Sam?
Mr. Mayor, I'm requesting that the council approve, approve a motion to affirm the, the notice that Mr. Crafton has been given to have the property cleaned up and the trailer removed and the debris removed by August 5. And after that, the city would undertake the cleanup and assess the cost to the property.
Okay. We have the recommendation, so someone wants to make that as a motion?
Just absent any real direction from the property owner on affirming a timeline or sustainability or cost analysis, I feel that we have to move forward with the, affirming the appeal or affirming the, the notice as was laid forward.
So, you are making that as a motion then?
Yes.
Now I'm hearing, okay. We have a motion, is there support for that motion?
I'll support it.
Any further discussion?
Is there, okay, if we do this and move forward with this, is there some process that could extend that at all if we were presented with some kind of a viable solution?
There, there is, knowing that August 5 is right around the corner, you could simply can, you could close the public hearing, you could continue this item to the July 15 hearing, which gives Mr. Crafton even more due, due process than he's already been given and that, that would be good for the city. Nothing's going to change in the next two weeks anyway, from the city's standpoint. And so, certainly could continue this to the July 15 meeting. If you want to another public hearing, I can put another public hearing on the agenda, otherwise it would just be, at that point, his comments would then need to come at the beginning of the meeting. And then you could decide at that meeting what you would like to do.
And now, obviously, we can't just let this thing keep going. It needs, it needs a plan, it needs a date, it needs some kind of a goal, and right now, we don't have one.
No, and the condition of the trailer, it's not habitable and the safety of him and the neighborhood, I just think we have to keep moving forward with it.
I agree. So, where are we at?
What's that?
Where are we at? We, we just did a motion.
Motion and support to affirm the
Okay.
August 5 deadline for cleanup.
It had a second.
Yep, it had a second, yep.
Okay.
If there's no further comments. I'm, I'm back and forth on this. I, I don't like, I know your options for another home or another place to live are limited. And I, I like the idea of giving them another two weeks to see some real progress. But I can't make those, I can't make the motion, I could only share my thoughts here. And I think you're going to need help to do that. I don't know what kind of support network you have, but it's to do that alone on your own, in two weeks' time, that time goes by so quickly. You'd have to have some kind of help from friends or Love Inc. or any number of agencies. It's, to do it on your own is going to be tough to show any, show any real improvement between now and two weeks from today.
Well, not to mention the safety quotient of that. Brad, you know how burned out structures are, they're unpredictable.
Yeah.
And just the extreme danger that exists there, the one.
In the next twenty years, I could put that stuff, I could, like, I could, yeah, I, if there's anything I could do. Because I mean, I don't, I, I don't, I don't really come back, but like, I mean, I, this, I don't know how else. I mean, I don't have the money to get that moved right now and other than lose it to the fire and then lose it completely and then lose the property along with it, on top of it, because I won't be able to afford to pay for it to be moved and done within the next thirty days. I mean, if there's anything that I can do, I guess if that's, if, I don't know.
If someone were to step forward and offer their assistance, be that a Love Inc. or a government agency, a local church, would you be willing to accept the help? You had mentioned earlier something about not wanting, I mean, you wanted, not having many, anybody else in there going through your stuff, and I understand that, but please step to the mic.
Yeah. I'm just thinking. For the fact of it being inhabitable, I mean, does it need to be habitable for, I mean, me to be working on it? If it's in a condition or to, if I painted it or whatever, if I put up some, some sort of boarding along it and painted it, whatever, I could put mirrors there so you can look at yourself if you, you know? If that's what you're into, but like, so I can just make it so I can work on things throughout with my time beams as slow as whatever, you know? And I have, I don't have to live there, it's a business residential, I can have an office there, I can build a, you know, eight by six foot office and put that right there on the concrete or like, I mean, are there any options at all? Because I understand where you guys are trying to make it so that it's desirable to be over or whatever. But, I mean, like, have you, have you come up and talked to me? Have you seen the things that I've been doing and what I've been working on, or do you just see it from the road? I've got putt putt golf in the backyard. I got, you know, I got my wood and everything else, but I mean, I truly have art all over that yard. And it might not look like it, but you could come walk through and I could show you amazing masterpiece that I'm slowly working on while I'm cleaning up. And I mean, it just, just because, I don't, yeah.
It's, it's not the yard, it's the trailer house and the stuff that's around it.
Okay, so.
The lean-to and the trailer house. That's what we're talking about as the, the nuisance or the abatement.
Okay, if I get rid of the lean-to and all the junk that's just right out in the open there and make it so that's closed off, where I can start building on that concrete there and give you a date and everything else within two weeks. I mean, I'll have that lean-to gone, I'll have a plan for you, telling you what I plan on doing within two weeks. The only thing I, I wouldn't be able to do, or I might even be able to do, is get that car out of there, but I would like to save the car frame. But if that is something that you guys absolutely can't see, then this is my childhood home, likes, for twenty years that my dad just gave to me last year that passed away. And I'm not trying to pay, play a pity card, but this place means the world to me and, I mean, it's the only reason why I'm in Sheldon.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I might. So, I really don't want to get into a back and forth here, but I think it's important, it's important to know this. Is, if Kevin was seeking more time for the cleanup, I would, we would offer, we could offer more time for the cleanup, but we have a difference in position. So, city's position or my position is that, fire department's position is that this cannot be repaired. It's burned out and burned up. And Kevin's position is that it can be repaired. And, and that's, and, and that's, that's where we have the diff, difference. We understand that in this tragic situation, it wasn't insured. Had concerns raised from the neighbors, concerns raised from me, both as the county administrator and the city manager. He has until, here's an important factor to consider, he has until April 12 of next year to move in a new, a new trailer. I respectfully submit we're not doing him any favors by moving this far into the fall, because if he doesn't get it cleaned up, it's going to take him even longer to move a new trailer in if that's what he wants to do. And then he's got a non-conforming use issue, because this is, this is zoned commercial residential or CR or C1, that's how it's termed. So, he could put a house there or he could put a, a, a neighborhood retail business there. So, I understand your concern, I think you raise a good point. Certainly could give him another two weeks to come up with a plan for cleanup. But if his position is going to be that it, that it, trailer can be fixed, probably better off voting today and moving on.
All right. Any further comments, or let's, my call for the vote. Roll call, please.
Brister?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Barrowna?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Motion carries. You have, to August 5. Right, to August 5 is the date?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, moving on then to item D, accepting the retirement notice from police officer Brian Willinga. Sam, would you like to comment on that?
No, I just wanted to say, um, thank you to Officer Willinga for his nearly thirty-two years of service to our community. And we received the notice, notice yesterday. If you, if you remember, you know what, why don't we, we go ahead and accept it and then under manager's report, then we can talk a little bit about the vacancy.
Okay, take a motion to accept the resignation then?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brister?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Barrowna?
Aye.
All right, then let's move on to your report, Sam. And further that discussion as well.
Okay. I'll hit some highlights from the rest of my report and then we'll circle back and talk about the police officer vacancy. This morning, I met with Jeff and Buck Schwartz. They said they have only about seventy customers that do not have the compliant garbage cans. That's only about eight percent of their customers not in compliance. So, they said that the three-bill, utility billing inserts have helped a lot and it's gone well, so I was very pleased to hear that. They have not done their own notice yet, what their plan is, they will continue to pick up the garbage and put, they will put stickers on the non-compliant cans that say thirty-two gallons max. And under the sticker will be a, will be a copy of the, the notice that has gone out several times. Mark Gertler let me know that he has about twenty percent of his customers that do not have the compliant cans. He has sent out his own notice recently, which is helping. And Mark Anderson at Baumgar's let me know yesterday that they have sold two hundred and thirty of larger cans, fourteen more on order. And nine of the smaller cans, four more are spoken for and waiting to be picked up. He said he plans to actively stock three of each year round. So, I'm working on setting up a, a meeting for early August with the hollers to discuss the next step. My position is, is that, you know, we, we absolutely want to avoid, you know, the answer isn't leaving the garbage on the curbside, because that punishes city staff and it punishes the neighbors, right? So, we're going, we're going to be working for compliance, but now it's up to the hollers to, to do their due diligence to help encourage the remaining customers to get the, to get the cans. This has gone better than expected. I was a little bit concerned about July 1 and how things would be looking, but I'm, I'm pleased. So, also, I wanted to, to mention old dishead into the police officer vacancy. So, if you remember shortly before Chief Birch came to us, we, I came to you asking for permission to start a list. It's a very short list, we have that one name. And so, we're going to be reaching out to the, to that person. Now that we have opened up the residency requirement, we can, I can work with Chief Birch on doing some advertising and developing an additional list. And we do, and we do anticipate an additional retirement within the next year. So, and now if I might on, do you have anything to add on the? You want to step up and?
So, we have one person left on the list. I made contact today and hopefully I'll interview next Friday. So, then we'll find out if we need to do another list or if we can move forward with that candidate.
Are we looking at filling the reserve roles again?
As soon as I get that one filled, I'm going to hopefully do that. It's kind of on the back burner right now. That's my next goal.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to comment on, Scott, as long as you're up there? Unrelated to this, but as long as you're there.
Just on top of the top. Yep. So, they moved the date up, the dates, we're going to do two dates just to kind of break it up. And they're going to do the twenty-second and, sorry, the twenty-first and the twenty-second of July, because of school starting early. So, they're wanting to use the building and breaking it up, we're going to have probably ninety people per night. You know, that includes the volunteer. And then, you know, adding the officers will probably be close to a hundred people. And I think, talking to Angie, we should be able to use upstairs, we should have enough social distancing. So, I know it's kind of last minute, but we just got this finalized today of what we wanted.
And are you still looking for volunteers, or have you got?
Um, they're reaching out.
Okay.
Um, they're going to send out letters Friday, so they just wanted to make sure it was okay to use the building.
Okay, very good. Anything else from your report, Sam?
One, one last thing, if I might, regarding the, the use of this facility for the meeting rooms. That's one open-ended item from the last meeting. And my plan is to put that on the, at that point, I think we'll know more. And we wanted to get your consensus that this meeting, we don't need a, a vote, if you're okay with it. Just wanted to be able to have shop with a cop, have the letters go out.
Any objections? Anybody have objections to that at all?
No.
Okay, you have our consensus. All right, then moving on to council comments to my left, anybody have, anything you'd like to add?
Responsible, courteous to your neighbors if you're shooting on fireworks, and if it doesn't rain, it's getting dry out. So, be safe and have a happy Fourth.
Okay, Pete?
PM Curfew won that. Is it eleven on the Fourth?
Yes, eleven on the Fourth.
Okay.
I mean, you could go over ten.
The last day is the Fifth, right?
I believe so.
Okay, remember that.
Just want to thank you guys for your judgment and interpretation through, how you guys comprehend my situation. Appreciate the time and the consideration.
All right, and I have no further comments. Ange, do you have anything?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, and I'll. Okay, and all of our other city employees are off and about, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Hamilton?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
Thank you, Tricia.
You're welcome, have a good day.